Good evening, I'd like to call the special meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Mr. Long, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Dysar?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine is not with us. Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foché. The first and only item on our special meeting agenda tonight is the bid tabulation on the demolition of Maintenance and Transportation Warehouse. Good evening.
Good evening. Well, we had ten bidders that are active bidding group. We had our pre-bid, and of course you had to come to the pre-bid in order to bid, so they were all present. And the low bidder was Insulation Technologies with a bid of seventy-three thousand, seven-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. As you can see, they were all over the place, but there's a lot of them were grouped together, so... And they've done work for us in the past, so we've been, you know, satisfied with four.
Okay, are there any questions? Mr. England?
Thank you, Mr. Carey. How long is this process going to be taking?
Ninety days.
Ninety days?
They gave them ninety days.
And they have all the paperwork, like their insurance and everything, to cover?
Yeah, we have to get that next. As soon as you approve it tonight, I'll call them and get all of our insurance stuff going.
Okay, fine. Thank you, sir.
Are there any other questions at this time? Mr. Long?
The... This will be paid by FEMA?
Yes.
Ms. Foché?
Mm-hmm. In fact, they've been pushing us to do the demolition because we've, you know, used the money for the new building already, so they have been pushing on us to actually demolish. And this is the old warehouse and such on the old Araby Park land.
Okay. So, once they... It's complete, it'll be ready to be used for any other purpose that may come up in future years?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
One other question.
Mr. England?
Yeah, one other question. What about the neighborhood, you know, with the trucks, you know, because you have a lot of...
Well, just... I don't think we have a problem because there's not that many people. I mean, there are people back, but I think I'll have a talk with them. They'll have to cover their trucks before they take any...
I was just wondering, you know, what size ten trucks they're going to be using, you know, as far as that goes? You know, if they're going to be using large trucks, you know, where...
It's going to be mostly dump trucks, I think.
Dump trucks?
Yeah.
Hopefully, you know, as far as that goes.
They have to break up all that concrete. There's a lot of concrete to break up.
Because big ten trucks like that, they can do a little vibration and people get upset with their homes, you know?
Right. The good thing about that particular site is the site is really off and away from the neighborhood housing.
Right.
Even though the trucks will pass through the neighborhood to get to the site, the site of where these buildings are is pushed back.
Okay.
So, this is probably going to be one of our least intrusive demolition projects.
Okay, that's fine. I think it's...
And they won't be there, though. I don't think it'll take ninety days, anyway.
No, it's a small building.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Warner?
I'll make a motion that we accept the administration's bid, lowest bid, on the demolition of the warehouse.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Mr. England. Okay, further discussion, Mr. Long?
One other question. Is there any asbestos?
No, there's no asbestos.
No asbestos.
We've had it... The site tested before we went out to bid.
Okay, okay. So, I'm sure while these trucks are passing through the neighborhood, they'll... They have to be covered, I'm sure.
They have to be covered, anyway.
Anyway.
Yeah.
Even though there's no asbestos. Okay. Because we wouldn't want complaints from the neighborhood. Okay, thank you.
Okay, are there any other questions? Mr. Carey, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
For presenting these bids and for getting the bids out and tabulating them, and as you said, all the bids were all over the place.
Yeah.
And this is the lowest bid, so it's great. It looks like it's a good bid.
Well, I'm glad it was somebody we've used in the past, so I think it'll be okay.
Okay, good. Thank you. No further discussion? There's a motion on the floor and a second to accept the lowest bid of insulation technology. Please cash your votes.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion? Okay, there's a motion by Mr. England, seconded by Mr. Gaines. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you. And we will go directly into our committee meeting. At this time, I'd like to call the general committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Okay. Dear Heavenly Father, we are grateful for the opportunity that you give us to work together. Through the wisdom you grant to us, in response to any challenges we may face in providing a good public school system to this community, we accept our responsibilities in meeting the needs of every child, and we pray that at all levels of education, at the local level and at the state and federal departments of education, that children always remain the priority in all decisions made. These things we ask in your name. Amen.
Dr. Lewis, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
Pledge allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. Acevedo?
Here.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Dr. Kraft?
Here.
Mr. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Gaines?
Here.
Mr. England?
Here.
Mrs. Dysar?
Here.
Mrs. Lemoine is not with us. Dr. Lewis?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Foché. First item on the agenda was super news, and I know Alex is in the... Okay, Ms. Schneider? Good evening.
Good evening. The 2016-2017 school year is quickly coming to a close, and we have many exciting events coming up. This Friday, the St. Bernard Parish Annual Special Olympics will be held. Last year, a hundred and twenty Olympians competed in several different athletic events, including the hundred-meter run, the standing lawn jump, and the softball throw. The morning will kick off at nine fifteen with the entering parade, which we will be joined with other community partners, including the sheriff's office, fire department, and so forth. We hope you can make it. Next Saturday in Slidell, the St. Bernard Parish School Board will host the Lions Club Golf Tournament. This annual fundraiser supports our various community service projects. Looking forward, April twelfth marks our annual celebrating our school community banquet. On May tenth, parish government, in conjunction with the Chamber of Commerce, will be hosting its fourth annual day at the Capitol event. And the following evening is the Chalmette High graduation. Last month was especially exciting, and so with that, I'm going to introduce super news. Mr. Barry Lemoine and obviously Ms. Catherine Lemoine are both this evening being honored as king and queen of the upcoming parade, and so I'm going to go and make sure that our tech people have everything they need to start the super news, but you can... Just one second.
And now, from the desk of the superintendent's office, it's time for super news. Hello, I'm Barry Lemoine.
And I'm Alex Schneider, and welcome to this edition of super news. We'll kick things off with a quick look back at some of the fun that was Mardi Gras. Here, we see our elementary school students throughout our district and joining the carnival fun with family, friends, and faculty members, getting into the spirit of the season.
Also enjoying Mardi Gras time are the members of the Chalmette High School Band who led the parade at Disney World this year on Mardi Gras Day, and our Chalmette High School Chalmers competed and won a national competition during the carnival break in California. Congratulations to these groups who represented us so well on both coasts.
Also promoting parish pride were those members of the Junior Beta Club who traveled to Lafayette for the convention, which promotes the ideals of academic achievement, character, service, and leadership among elementary and secondary school students.
In other news, Epic Assemblies returned to St. Bernard Parish and performed for over two thousand of our middle and high school students. This professional touring group of elite and diverse young artists brings a powerful message to youth, blending their personal and sometimes tragic life stories with artistic expressions like dance, drama, original music, spoken word poetry, video, and inspirational speaking. They tackle and address some difficult issues while offering hope through positive alternatives to drugs, violence, and abuse.
And life, the choices you make. Sometimes you don't make the relevance, but that does not have to define you. I'm proud to say I'm not the label given to you. I chose to move forward, and you all will too.
Other performers also making big news were the members of our boys' basketball team who made it to this year's Final Four in Lake Charles. Congratulations to Coach Stockton and his Owl team and staff for its district championship and for your Final Four finish.
And while these Owls were excelling on the hardwood, Chalmette High School senior Kenny Nguyen was making his mark as a national merit finalist. This marks the third year in a row that we have had a student achieve this recognition here at Chalmette High School, given to only fifteen thousand students nationwide. Congratulations, Kenny.
And while Kenny was doing well on his test, our entire district is gearing up for testing season, which will take place throughout the months of April and May. We remind all of our students to get a good night's sleep and eat a good breakfast before the big day. We also want to remind our parents that the end of the third nine weeks is here, and report cards will be distributed on March twenty-third. As we enter the final quarter of the 2016-2017 school year, please review your child's report card and identify strengths and areas of growth, and reach out to your child's teacher if you have any questions or need additional support.
St. Bernard Parish Schools is excited to be welcoming its newest class of students to our school family this fall. Preschool registration for our Pre-K four program will begin at the end of this month. St. Bernard Parish Schools is one of the only districts in the state to offer a universal preschool program to families in our parish, committed to developing a solid foundation for each of our youngest students. Information regarding registration can be found on our district website or by visiting us at central office.
Speaking of all things new, our school is excited by our newest school coming on board this fall, Arlene Miro Elementary School. The new school is being opened to accommodate the district's ever-growing student population in the upper portion of the parish. Board members approved the new elementary district lines at the February twenty-first meeting after closely reviewing current neighborhood maps and projected growth potential for each neighborhood. Parents can review the elementary district map on our district website.
Miro Elementary will be a beautiful, wonderful school.
Yeah.
With all the latest technology and just... It's going to be first-class, so we were very, very anxious and appreciative of all the hard work that you and the architects and the builder has been doing.
And of course, we can't have a new school without a new principal. Congratulations to Lacoste Elementary Assistant Principal Natalie Albers, who is appointed as the new principal of Arlene Miro Elementary School. A fifteen-year veteran of our schools, Alber will join over three hundred of her current Lacoste students at the new school, and she says she's excited to be leading this newest generation of Miro Bs to new heights and helping them reach their full potential.
And now, it's time for our teacher features, as presented by the members of our school board.
Hello, I'm Shawn Warner, and today we recognize the efforts and commitment of Chalmette High School AP English Language Teacher David Bellard. Mr. Bellard works tirelessly to create a curriculum of rigor and academic excellence in his classroom, an effort that has contributed to recent recognition of Chalmette High and is an AP program of distinction. Mr. Bellard goes above his classroom duties to sponsor the CHS Beta Club and also acts as the Posse Scholarship Coordinator. Thank you, Mr. Bellard, for your opening the doors for the students and for your commitment to Chalmette High School. Go Owls!
A full box of matches and a pair of brown rubber work boots with the name "Gallion" written across the tops in faint black ink.
Hello, I'm Cliff England, Vice President of St. Bernard Parish School Board, and today we salute Jessica Grant, a dedicated and caring educator at Joe Davis Elementary School. Ms. Grant is a tireless worker and a true school leader. She is creative, energetic, enthusiastic, and helpful. She is a mentor to others and dedicated to helping our students reach their fullest potential and enjoy learning. Ms. Grant is a true asset to our school community.
Nice reading and writing, capitals and periods. Oh, but if it's a question, then you need a...
Question mark.
Okay.
Hello, I'm Catherine Lemoine, and it is my privilege to introduce Ms. Felicia Butler. We are truly fortunate to have her as a part of the Araby Elementary Team. Her knowledge, expertise, and professionalism are remarkable. Even in the most challenging situations, Ms. Butler calmly displays consistency, high expectations, compassion, and love for each of her students. She helps our children grow emotionally as well as academically, and finds ways to tap into their strengths and celebrate their successes. She is adaptable, fun-loving, hard-working, kind, and supportive. She is an amazing teacher and an asset to Araby Elementary's staff, its students, and their parents.
When he comes down the chimney, where does he put the presents when he gets to the house? He puts the presents where?
Under a tree.
Under a tree.
Hello, I'm Bill Egan, and today we pay tribute to Mrs. Andrea Luchardi, the AP at Andrew Jackson Middle School. Mrs. Luchardi is a super leader and a super lady who goes above and beyond in all that she does in her school and our district. She is a leader and mentor who treats everyone with respect, which sets the tone for the positive relationships and great learning environment at the school.
Well, that would just about do it for this edition of super news, but before we go, we'd like to recognize Kylie Bordelon, a fifth grader at Joe Davis Elementary School who recently won the Regional Student of the Year competition. Kylie will join six other students from across Louisiana for the state competition in April. Congratulations and good luck.
Thanks for tuning in and for joining us here today on super news.
Well, we always let the super news roll.
Ms. Schneider, thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation of super news. It's always great to hear, and we are... Quite a quite busy school system, and it's great to highlight all of the positive things. Thank you very much, and thanks to Barry and Jack, the men of pen, for an excellent presentation. Thank you very much. Anyone else? Mr. Long?
Just a quick question from Ms. Foché concerning the Chalmette High School graduation. Have we been getting any feedback about using UNO? Has it gone over well, or...
I think it has gone over well. I think parents are a little bit relieved that they will have more access to the actual ceremony itself, so many more tickets are going to be available to families. So, it's set May eleventh at the UNO arena.
Is there a limit on tickets that the families will get?
I think there is a limit, but it is a much greater limit than what we had before. It'll be at least ten tickets per van.
I think last year it was like three or four, was it?
Last year, if I remember correctly, I think it was four in the main auditorium, and there were additional two in the back part.
That's good. Okay, great. Thanks.
Ms. Foché, when will the Student of the Year be announced for the state? When will that take place?
The competition will be April fifth, so Kylie Bordelon, who is the fifth-grade regional winner, she'll be traveling to Baton Rouge on that day and undergoing interviews, and they'll look at her writing sample, do the oral interview, look at her portfolio, and it will be announced that evening.
Right.
So, it'll be April fifth.
Good. Well, congratulations to Kylie, and we wish you much, much success as a Student of the Year for the state. It's great she went on to regional competition, so congratulations to Kylie and to the Chalmette High School basketball team who went to state. It was quite exciting to have a basketball team go to state. I think the last time was in the...
Twenty years ago.
Yeah.
Nineteen eighty-five.
In the eighties.
Thirty years ago.
Thirty?
Yeah, thirty.
Yeah, yeah.
Right. I think it was in the mid-eighties, if I remember, because I was still teaching at the school at that point. Excuse me?
I think some of our other schools did go, though.
Yes, St. Bernard High did.
That are not high schools today.
If you remember.
Oh, St. Bernard did go. Yes, they did too. Thank you for that clarification, but that was... They did a great job.
Will you remember what year that was for St. Bernard?
What year? Do you remember, Dr. Henderson, what year it was for St. Bernard High since you were...
It had to be in the sixties.
I was not in the team.
He wasn't on the team, but...
Um, no, so they actually went to state actually when I was in high school. I don't know exactly which year.
So, what years were you in high school, if you want to review that?
So, I graduated in ninety-two, started in eighty-eight.
He's a youngster.
So, it was between eighty-eight and ninety-two?
I graduated in sixty-seven, and I think they went to... They went to state that year, or sixty-six, somewhere up in that area.
Okay.
Good times.
Yes, those are fun times. You know, kids get to do fun things.
Okay, anyone else on super news? Okay, thank you again, Alex. Appreciate it. Okay, next item is... Will be chaired by Dr. Lewis.
Thank you, Ms. Dysar. Item five, discussion regarding... And we have two items this evening, an update on Louisiana SAA draft plan and also outcome of Louisiana's special legislative session.
Is that you, Ms. Foché?
Yes, that's me.
Okay.
Actually, probably Dr. Lewis and I could do this in tandem, since we've both been heavily involved in the ESSA plan for the state, the proposed plan. What I've provided for you in your folder is the latest draft of the framework, a summary of the framework. The actual document, or the draft document itself, is over a hundred pages long, and I have it right here, and I'm in the process of going through the fine print with a lot of these, because the summary, while it is good, you know how they always say, "The devil's in the details," as you go through it with a fine-tooth comb. I obviously am not going to read through this. When we looked through the first draft a couple of months ago, this document has not had significant changes, except in one area that I will point out. If you remember, five percent of the new score was going to be what was called leading indicators, and we discussed these are non-tested indicators. And at that time, the discussion was that school districts would have a menu from which to pick, looking at maybe a weakness that they felt a particular school had, and address that weakness, and have it approved by the state, and a panel of people coming to do an evaluation. That didn't necessarily sit well with a lot of people, because it would have been a... I think the flexibility of that was too much for some people to really wrap their heads around, so what the state is proposing now is something that they call interest and opportunities. And I'm not sure that I totally agree with this, but they've put together some indicators that they feel every school should offer, whether it be like elementary and middle schools, visual arts, performing arts, you know, art and music programs, foreign language programs, and really quite a few things that we would have to invest in to be offered in every school. I'm not sure that's a good cost-benefit analysis when you take a look at five percent of accountability and you're looking at the investment that would have to be made in both human resources as well as financial resources, if you could even get the adults that were certified in those particular areas to present those types of programs. And then it would be even more, you know, extensive at the high school level. But part of the framework, if you read the new section on opportunities and interests, interest and opportunities, they're talking about taking three years to develop that section of the plan. So, as we speak of it right now, what the state is proposing to do is to submit the ESSA plan, saying that it's going to be a placeholder for that five percent, and it will take two to three years to develop before we would implement. So, there's a great deal of uncertainty surrounding that area. The submission deadlines for this plan is that school systems could... Or states across the country could choose either an April third submission or September eighteenth submission, with nothing in between. So, our state, our state superintendent is pushing to submit this plan on April third. Many of the states... There are only seventeen states in the country that are still trying to make this April third deadline. Most of the states are falling back to the September deadline. Some of it has to do with changes that are made with... That are being made with the new administration and the new Congress, that there was... Were a set of accountability regulations, or ESSA regulations, put out in conjunction with the plan, and over the past week, they have now been withdrawn, they've been defeated in Congress and pulled back. So, there are... It doesn't affect the essence of the plan. It does not change that the law will be implemented, but the regulations, the regulatory part that USDOE will do, they're pulling back on those regulations. So, there's some uncertainty about what the... How these are going to be, I guess, looked at. Uncertainty surrounded supplant... The supplanting provision, supplement versus supplant, and these federal guidelines, as well as some of the other areas. But our state superintendent wants this plan sent in by April third. Therefore, he has called a special meeting of Bessie on March twenty-ninth to try to get Bessie to approve this hundred-plus-page plan with the synopsis that you have in front of you. The superintendent... The majority of the superintendents in the state are asking for a delay, and he's not really listening to that. We feel that it will not change any of the implementation for this coming year in terms of standards, assessments, our current accountability plan, and we don't feel that... Many of us do not feel that this plan has been adequately fleshed out. Not only are there parts of it that are still under discussion, some of the pieces that he has proposed in accountability, we are somewhat opposed to some of the provisions. If you look through this, if you would have taken the spring 2016 scores of all the schools in the state of Louisiana and applied these new standards directly to the scores, only one percent of the schools in the state would have received an A. Only six percent of the schools in the state would have received a B. That meant ninety-three percent of the schools would have gotten a C, D, or F rating because of the raising of the standards. That would mean, if it were implemented today, then the children who attend ninety-three percent of our schools would be eligible for vouchers in the state, because the law says that a C, D, or F school, anybody attending that, those children are eligible. says that a C, D, or F school, anybody attending that, those children are eligible for vouchers. I don't know if you read the, um, the report that was sent out on the accountability for the children on vouchers, if any of you read that last week. I think it came out on February 24th, latter part of the month, where they rated all of the students as if it were, all the students on the vouchers throughout the state, as if they're one school, they got a D rating. Okay? They were the third lowest in the state of Louisiana of all school systems, if you considered them a school system. So...
With grade levels included?
Those would have been third through high school, all the tested grades of any, you know, the kids who were on the vouchers. The, I guess, the, I don't know, interesting part of it, if, if there is an interesting part of this, with this rush to get this plan in place, they're talking about a phased-in implementation, so that the actual upper limits of these standards would not fully go into effect until the year 2025, which is an eight-year period, with a phase-in to get to that. But the majority of the changes, like halfway through, they want to do immediately, and then with a decreasing, you know, you turn, tell me your rate of increase and your rate of decrease, but to get to these new standards, the big jump would be the 2017, 18 school year, and then another moderate jump, and a moderate jump to get you to 2025. So the major differences is they would take, you know, the, the scores come back in three to eight on a five-point scale, which is advanced, mastery, basic, approaching basic, and unsatisfactory. The new proposal is that students would have to, to be considered, to get the full hundred points, the student would have to score mastery, which is level four, which is a big stretch on a five-point scale. So for the student to be considered proficient, he would have to score mastery. So you'd get the hundred points for mastery, then you get a hundred fifty for the advanced, but what hap, what happened is, the new basic would be fifty points, and for approaching and unsat, you would get zero points. Now, just think what that means. If a child scored mastery, he gets a hundred points, the level right below it, he could be one scale score, one point below it, to get fifty, a fifty's an F. That's the lowest DF borderline rating. So you would have children basically getting an A, or no. And then when you would go in to average these scores, how do you pull up a zero? If you have one child make a zero, it takes two advanceds, a hundred and fifty each, to get you back to the hundred, because those two advanced would give you three hundred points, you divide by three to get your hundred. So every child who would score unsat, or approaching basic, you would need to have two other kids score advanced to counteract those. And that's why you see, you would see such a tremendous drop in scores. So one of our issues is that we think that the performance levels should be worth different amounts. So if you don't quite hit the mastery level, if that's what we're going for, the new standard to get the hundred points, then maybe right below it, you need to have something where you could get the equivalent of a B or a C before it drops down to an F, because right now, it's all or nothing. And that's what causes, that would, what would cause a big drop in scores. The high school with four components, because the elementary and middle right now are primarily based upon assessment, a one-week assessment for these kids. But the high school, you have four components. Every one of those four indicators, they wish to raise the bar. For the EOC tests, you're talking the same thing as three to eight, to put it on a five-point scale, and put that fourth level as mastery with a hundred points with the same grading scale. The ACT, they want to raise the score that you need to be proficient from an eighteen composite to a twenty-one. A twenty-one exceeds the national average. The average ACT score of, of states where all kids take the ACT is a nineteen-point something, because you're having all your special education kids, every child take it. So there are some states that ma, like Louisiana, that mandate all kids take it, and there are other states that kids choose. If they're going to college, they take it, if they're not going to college, and they don't. But for the states where every child is mandated, the average is only nineteen-point something, nineteen-point four or five, I forgot what the tenths turned out to be. So we're asking now, and you know how hard it is to raise ACT one point at a time, so we're talking now, in order for a school to be rated proficient, or at that A level, that you have every kid score a twenty-one. And you get zero points for a seventeen or below. So to counteract that zero, you need two perfect thirty-sixes. How many kids in this entire country on the ACT make a perfect thirty-six? If you have one in Louisiana, his picture's in the paper, and that child is celebrated. So it's much more difficult to make a thirty-six on the ACT than it is to score an advanced on any of these standardized tests. So you've got the scoring system for the ACT really a detriment to schools that take everybody, your comprehensive high schools that are open to all, when we test them all. The cohort graduation rate, right now, if you have seventy-five percent, that's considered proficient. They want to raise it to exceed the national average, and make it a ninety percent graduation, cohort graduation rate. Well, you know, you think, okay, that gives you a ten percent leeway, but if you've ever been in a school setting, or you've dealt with teenagers, in terms of, people who are, or kids who are leaving the system, who are going to get a, a GED that doesn't count as a completer, or have family difficulties or problems within, and do not finish, those kids then would get the zeros, and it would be a very difficult level to me. So every indicator is being raised. That's why you're seeing, you would see then such a drop in the actual scores. So what we're trying to do, with very little progress, is to get them to understand that in these rating systems, it's one thing to raise the bar, and say the standard has to go higher and higher, but it's another thing to have a graduated scale that makes some sense. So if a child doesn't quite reach the mark, then it's not either all or nothing, that there's something in between that's more meaningful. So if you can't make the A, maybe you can make a B, or maybe you can make a C, the equivalent of that, but not go from an A to an F, and especially to a zero, because you tell, we tell teachers all the time, if you're grading on a number scale, if you're grading on a letter, and you give a kid A, B, C, D, or F, and you convert those to quality points, and you do an average, that's fine. He can take an F, he can make an A on the next test, and he can have a C average. But if you give a child a zero, he can make a hundred on the next test, then he has a fifty average, which means he still has an F. So when you're putting numbers as indicators of achievement, and you're throwing in these zeros, to counteract zeros are almost impossible, unless you have a student body where you've got an upper group of kids that score exceedingly well, if you're a selective admissions school, or a more affluent area, where the kids are coming with more skills as they walk into your buildings. So we are trying to get a more realistic, I guess, grading scale. And as we're pushing that, you know, our state superintendent talks about all the stakeholder mil, uh, meetings, and how the full year, we've had to look at the plan. But every time you propose that something like this is changed, the answer then becomes, oh yeah, that's a nice point, well taken, we'll take it under consideration, and then the changes are not made. So it's one thing when you ask for input, but if you're not taking any of the input, what's the difference? So at that point, not only do, you know, do we have concerns about how we want it delayed, because we don't feel the interest in opportunity section is, is well done, in fact, it's not done at all, that we want the accountability guidelines and grading scales to be changed, and they're referenced in this plan, um, that the, I guess, funding that he puts in the plan. And if you just look at the very last page of this, page twenty-three of your little summary, right now, all school districts receive Title I funding and Title II funding, all the different federal titles, through a formula. Takes a lot of things into account. The state can hold back some of the money for statewide initiatives. So for example, you look at this chart, Title I says the, this is the old NCLB, this is how it is right now. The state withholds seven percent of all Title I's that comes to the state of Louisiana, and then they go ahead and have school districts that have struggling schools or failing schools to compete for grants for school improvement purposes. They withhold one percent for administrative purposes at the state level. Therefore, ninety-two percent of the funds by formula go to the different school systems to run our Title I programs. What this propos, uh, what this, I mean, ninety-two percent is unrestricted, so that is the total of the hundred percent funding. Okay? Now, their synopsis are there, the way they're presenting this, meaning ninety-nine percent actually goes to the schools, the ninety-two percent by formula, but then that's seven percent that's, that's distributed not by formula, but that's targeted to specific through, schools through competitive grants. What the new ESSA regulations say is that school, or that states may withhold an additional three percent for directed services, services directed by the state. So he is proposing to withhold that additional three percent, which means ten percent of the funds would be withheld by the state, one percent is kept for administrative purposes. Therefore, only eighty-nine percent of the money would then flow through by formula to the districts. But he's still saying ninety-nine percent actually goes to schools. That's how it's being couched, because nine, eighty-nine percent will go through as a formula, but then the state would distribute those, the other ten percent, by competitive grants, or to whoever they feel are the school districts most in need. Now, our position is that all school districts have struggling students, and schools that need additional assistance, and that's how we spend our Title I funds. So we are, as superintendents, the majority of superintendents, are opposed to this additional three percent holdback, because they don't have to do that. I want, and we would want, our three percent to dedicate to the same purposes that the state would dedicate it all to. And we feel that locally, we know we're best to use it within our district, because the reality is, we might not get any of it, if it goes to a formula with how they consider schools in most need, because other than our alternative school, we wouldn't have any schools that qualify for these monies through the current accountability, um, formula at this point today. The same thing with the Title II, which is the professional development. I won't go through the chart per se, but there's an additional three percent holdback that they can do, same type of situation. The Title III is for the English-language learners, that's proposed to stay the same. And there'll be some new Title IV monies that will allow us to spend money on educational technology, and some other types of things, that those directed services would allow you to spend money on as well. And those should come to us by formula, even though the state will hold back five percent of those funds for what they consider statewide grants that they put it through to. So I guess, I'm giving you this if you're interested in actually reading all of the verbiage, but in general, it addresses funding, it addresses the accountability program, and the potential changes in raising the standards, and it addresses, um, things about teacher preparation programs, how the colleges and universities, um, will have to have year-long residencies beginning in the year 2018, and if we have alternate certification programs, like we run one, the competencies that the people have, that our candidates have to come out with, is going to be much more stringent as we apply the new regs to, to our programs. And the emphasis is on struggling schools, and trying to direct more funds to those particular schools. You know, that's kind of it in, in a nutshell. So, um, many, many of the superintendents in the state are writing letters asking for a delay. I don't hold out a whole lot of hope. When we get to the Bessie meeting, we're going to have many of the, um, people who sit on the Bessie board, uh, agree with our state superintendent to send it in now, and work on all of this later, as the year progresses. I personally don't like that, because I feel that, um, once you get it passed, then you're not as amenable to making some changes that really need a lot of discussion. So the argument that we have had a year's worth of discussion, and we've included many, many stakeholders, the part of it that is true, that there has been a year-long roadshow to bring it to all communities, and allow people to hear it, but I don't think that the feedback from many of the groups has been taken seriously, especially the feedback from the educators themselves. So I think we're in for a very rough ride with this. Part of the accountability formula is to provide not only the status, meaning what the kid scores, but to make twenty-five percent of it be a growth index on how well, or how much the child has grown from one year to the next. In theory, that's wonderful, but, um, we have some reservations with the growth formula, because it reacts to growth in relation to your peer group. And when you take a look at it, it puts kids in percentiles, so if three of us are in the same peer group, and we all make the same growth, you know, that's the average. If one of us grows a lot more than the other two in the peer group, well, that school gets credit for the student that grew a lot more. But then, that student gets pushed in a two- to three-year period to a higher peer group, a greater performing peer group, because he's doing well. And to me, at some point, you reach maybe your plateau, you're with a peer group that you may be going to run with, and maybe fall a little bit behind, but you're not going to continue that growth. I'd like to see a growth model where there's a positive growth for every child, and that every child could attain that positive growth. The way it's set up now is that half of your kids will score greater than expected growth, and the other half are going to score below expected growth. So we're back to those particular rankings. You can't get all the kids making their expected growth, because the expected growth is going to be the average of the peer group, which means some will be above it, and some, by design, then will definitely be below it. So they can't all make it. That's a very simplified version of a very complex growth index, but, so no matter which way you look at it, there's always safeguards to kind of keep pulling you down, as you try to, to climb up and to fashion a program that's going to be good for all students. So as we say, the devil's in the details, and we're trying to get some of this changed to some extent. The people who make the decisions, I venture to say, don't even read this whole thing, just hear the summary and go, oh, that's really good, let's vote for it, because we want higher standards. The advocacy groups, like Lobby, and some of those groups are in full support... The advocacy groups like Lobby and some of those groups are in full support of this, except they don't want the growth index. They think that that's going to hurt their school scores of the more selective, Dr. Lewis is grinning, he knows exactly what I'm talking about, that the more selective admission schools may not see as much growth with their students because they're scoring high and they're not making the growth they need to make. Whereas, there's more growth potential, many, they feel, for kids that are scoring lower. But I venture to say that's not true in this particular growth model because I think it's going to be difficult. I think what's going to happen in this model, you're going to see, or we're going to see most schools pushed to the middle. So, we're going to wind up seeing a lot of schools that are making the C grade and not as many at the upper end and not as many as the lower, at the lower end. And if the laws of Louisiana stay in effect, as more of these schools are pushed to the middle, then more of these schools, the children in those schools will be eligible for vouchers and the, I think that's really what a lot of people are looking for, is more of that school choice and making kids eligible for these. So, I think this particular formula is going to push schools to that middle ground. And that's going, you know, it's going to be very demoralizing to students and parents and staff members. And I think the PR situation is going to be very tense then at that, at that time. So, I realize I have not gone very deeply into this plan, but if we go deeply into this plan, we would be here all night. And it really wouldn't do anyone that much good. But, some parts of this are going to be very difficult to implement and work toward these particular standards.
I believe, Dr. Kraft, you want to speak?
All right. I've listened to this, and you've done a good job of describing what's going on, Mr. Vouché. But, as I surmise it, having been in education all my life and received a doctorate degree, I've studied people and their reasons to promote things. And this is so unrealistic, what they're pushing for. And I think what we're dealing with is testing as a weapon. If your objective is to create failure, this is the best way to do it. And for this, it's all behind the idea of vouchers, as you indicated. And if we want enough vouchers out there to privatize public taxation and for the vouchers to take place, we will mess up decades, decades of time to destroy public education. And as I've indicated before, I think that public education has served this nation well. We still were the first one to put a man on the moon. So, if you look at, you look at this, it's not fair, but I think someone's out there and they have the power. And if they have the power, they supposedly can do anything they want to do. And of course, people of goodwill and people of common decent sense have got to oppose this. And I'm proud you're on the BESI board to add some rhyme or reason to what's going on, Ms. Vouché, and we appreciate that. But not all people around this nation have the same objectives. And of course, as we've seen, testing takes up a third of our time with the students throughout St. Bernard Parish. Some probably districts take more than that. And this is, this is not right. It's not best for the students. We could spend some of that third of the time in educating and involving the student with good educational activities. And these activities are important to those students. And sometimes, those people that's been testing a long time, longer than we have, we've always done evaluation and we feel good about the accountability that St. Bernard has developed over the decades. And Ms. Vouché and I go way back, I go a little further back than her in the 60s in involving myself in education. And every student is different. And sometimes you got to involve in that student's education, you got to involve your heart and your hand. Now, no student, no student can be defined for that success with one number. Just ain't going to happen. Forgive me, you English teachers out there, just ain't going to happen. So, we got to be realistic in our determination, what is best. So, anytime that you can throw zeros in, you know there's something wrong with the system. That zero is so difficult. If you add it in, that average is going to suffer. In fact, it's going to take a while to do it. Zero to 50 with two, and that's to make 100. And it's difficult to make 100 on some test. So, I think what we've got here, my good friends, is that we've developed a program that testing is a weapon to achieve a certain outcome. And we have to recognize that outcome very early on or we cannot defeat it. So, as we, as we go forward, we've got to encourage people of good sense and goodwill in education to make it happen. So, I appreciate your attention to this. As I've said before, in statistics, you can drown in a river with an average depth of two feet. And if you deal with averages there, you can say those people in a class that made from 90 to 100, all of them, it's half of them going to be below average. So, again, we have to be realistic in our interpretation of statistics. And anyone that involves it the wrong way is not a friend of education at any, at any point. So, I thank you for your time.
Any other board members before we go to the other portion of number five? Ms. Isar?
Yes. First of all, this document itself, I see a couple of grammar errors on page two. So, the state of Louisiana, if they were being judged, would not get 100.
Thank you.
Number one. Number two is, why, what is the justification of our state superintendent to rush through this and not take the additional time to review and to evaluate this framework? And to realize the repercussions of not all of the accountability not being valid, but of actually hurting our students, you know, their whole morale, you know, our school system as a whole and its whole state of Louisiana and St. Bernard Parish? You know, for a student either to get 100, you know, either an A or an F, I mean, that's just not a valid way of measuring any accountability standard. So, what's his reasoning or his rationale? What is he verbalizing about that?
What he's basically saying is that if we submit the plan on April 3rd, there's supposed to be 120-day turnaround for approval. And the approval from Washington would come prior to the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. And what he's saying is that everyone deserves to know prior to the beginning of the year what the plan will be. Because by law, ESSA is supposed to be implemented with the beginning of the 2017-18 school year. My comeback is, to that argument, is that all of the standards are in place, so there will be no difference in the teaching whatsoever. You've got your ELA, math, science, and social studies standards already in place. The assessments will not be changed. You're going to have the same assessments that are going to come in the spring of 2018. The only thing that could potentially change is an evaluation scale on those assessments, this accountability scale, that based on what we would finally decide on, what that phase in would be. And I don't think that's important. I don't think the regular teacher sits in her classroom and says, oh, gosh, I don't know if that child's going to get 100 or 50 or 125 or whatever. They don't think in those terms. These are the, I'm teaching English Language Arts, here are the standards, here's the curriculum. None of that will change. So, it will go on. This is a higher-level argument. We have been through many, many years with changes in the accountability formula midstream. So, I don't, and the funding is the same kind of situation. If we are going, we as a state have to decide if that additional 3% is going to be withheld. The feds have already indicated that it is a state-level decision. So, the amount of funding that we're going to get, even if we wait for the September submission, we would know at the beginning of the school year because the feds aren't going to overturn it. You know, the state would decide which percentage would follow. So, the funding is not going to necessarily be impacted. So, I think our state superintendent's basic argument is with the earlier submission, he would, we would have a plan in place. But as you can see, parts of the plan aren't even fleshed out yet. He would intend to continue fleshing out those parts of the plan. So, I don't see the need, personally do not see the need to rush it. I would rather have an entire plan in front of us that we then vote on, that whether we like it or not, because we're all not going to get, you know, none of us are going to get 100% of what we want. But I think the urgency, if we wait, there'll be more pressure put to get this thing accomplished, to get down to the nitty-gritty of whatever negotiation or whatever give and take, whatever room for movement is available. And that could be done. Because all of these listening tours and all of these meetings that have been held over the course of the year have already been held. The suggestions are there. So, to me, the time is to get down to, all right, what can we live with? What can we do? The plan, it's, the federal plan only calls for, it's a reduced amount of testing. You're going to have to do ELA in third, ELA in math in third through eighth grade. And science once in the elementary and once in the middle. Our state plan calls for testing in all four core academic areas. That's a bone of contention. Same thing with the amount of testing at the high school level. Now, we say that that's, you know, the state is saying, well, we've reduced testing. A kid is only going to have 2% of his time in statewide assessments. But what we fail to say, even that 2% in statewide assessment, since we have to go to a computerized format, there's a three-week window where we have to spend three weeks running kids through the state assessment on the computers. So, you're not just impacting the school for that one-time testing that each kid takes. You're impacting the school for a three-week period as you're trying to get them all through with the right electronic devices upon which they can take these assessments. So, we're reducing instructional time, not with tests, but with movement. Because at the upper levels, they don't want you to, your own teacher, to test the students. So, if we did that, then you're putting a different teacher overseeing testing than the class that's being tested. That teacher is in somebody else's class. So, that's impacting the instructional process for that entire three-week period. At the high school level, we're on the 404 block, we do that two months a year. We do it in December at the end of the first semester, we do it in May at the end of the second. So, there's a lot of things in here that, it's almost like we're a slave to these state assessments. And there's so much importance put on it. But, just in wrapping it up to directly answer your question, the argument is that the, if we adopt the plan as is and send it in, we'll get that approval from the feds in August, right when the school year starts, and everyone will know what the plan initially looks like, even though there are parts of it that are not finalized. So, I don't know.
Any other board members?
Thank you.
Yes, thank you very much for the presentation, Ms. Vouché. And as she mentioned, the item, it's going to be addressed on the 29th at the BESI board meeting. And then also, Ms. Vouché, we have the outcomes of the Louisiana Special Legislative Session.
Okay. And I'll be very quick with this. We're very lucky in the special session that we did not, we were not one of the entities that experienced further cuts to balance this year's budget. We had all, we had already been reduced. We had $44 million outside the formula when the fiscal year started. We were reduced down to 20 million. So, we lost 24 million during this fiscal year. But we did not lose any additional funds as a result of the special session. So, Governor Edwards was very protective and did not introduce any cuts and was opposed to any that would possibly come out of any legislative deal. This upcoming session, BESI has sent over a new MFP formula to the state. The governor indicated that he would, in his executive budget, put an additional $18 million into the formula, but for dedicated purposes, for high-cost special education services and for supplemental course allocations for the career tech programs for dual enrollment. That's all well and good, but the 20 million, I just want people to know, the news says that they're proposing a standstill K-12 MFP formula. But in reality, the 20 million outside the formula is gone. 18 is proposed to be put inside, so that's a net loss of 2 million. Plus, with the increase of the employer portion of the retirement system by over a percentage, that results in $38 million to the state school systems for the employer portion. That's $38 million less going into the classroom. So, we will experience, in effect, a $40 million loss to put money into the classrooms in K-12 education. 38 million that has to be directed to the retirement systems and that $2 million net loss. So, while the news will say it's a standstill K-12 funding proposal, in reality, it's a $40 million decrease from what we've had this fiscal year. So, people are going to be, we're going to be scrambling as we staff and provide resources for this coming year that we're going to have to look at tightening up even more than we already have. And that's supposing the legislature will accept the MFP as it is sent over and not, in order to close the budget gaps for this coming fiscal year, hopefully, they will not reduce the MFP for, okay? That's basically.
Thank you, Ms. Vouché. Any questions or comments from board members? Thanks again, Ms. Vouché. And we'll head on to item number six, which is the Head Start Continuation Application. Dr. Raviolo, good evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for allowing me to come before you tonight. I've come to present and seek your approval for our Head Start Continuation Application for the 2017-18 school year. I'll be meeting with our policy council on March 21st to review the application with them and to ask for their approval. Ms. Ashley Miller is our policy council president, and as you are aware, Ms. Lemoine is our school board representative on our policy council. You have a set of handouts in front of you, item six. For the 2017-18 school year, we'll again devote funding toward preserving our universal pre-K program for four-year-olds. As a reminder to you, Head Start is one port, one part of that, that funding, as we use Title I, LA4, HE, the Education Excellence Fund, EEF, IDEA, Head Start, and local dollars to support our universal preschool program. I'll be speaking specifically about our Head Start application. If you would take a look at handout 6A, we're again funded for 112 students. If you would take a look at handout 6A, we're again funded for 112 students. The federal contribution from Head Start is $846,367, an increase of about, of $15,221 over the last two years. The $15,221 of that total amount must be obligated for training and technical assistance. The remaining dollars go toward the other items listed, salaries, benefits, supplies, child liability insurance, local travel, professional development activities, and field trips. The next several pages, the first group, we'll kind of reference the, the newer electronic application that we now, we now operate under. Everything's submitted electronically. So those first couple of pages are the summary report. The second group is assurances that we have to provide. If you look at the next couple of pages, you'll see the breakdown of the budget, the numbers that we have there by category, personnel, fringe benefits, travel, equipment, supplies, the INREC charges that are, that are done in the breakdown. If you look at handout 6B after the budget, I've included our program narrative, and it's broken down into two sections required by the federal government. Last year, when I came before you, I mentioned to you that the Head Start has moved, has moved toward a five-year application process. And last year, we were in the baseline application, so we had a, I think it was a 19-page narrative, full explanation of every, every aspect. Well, now, for year two and subsequent years, for the rest of the five years, we're, we're only required to submit an abbreviated continuation application narrative. So this one's only about six pages. And, and in the abbreviated narrative, we only need to include any kinds of additions, deletions, or revisions to our program's goals and objectives, as well as any changes in the subsections. So if you look at section, at 6B, you've, you'll notice that we've listed our goals and we've listed an update in each one of those goals. Our goals are going to remain the same. We've kind of tweaked some of them, but for the most part, our goals will be remaining the same. We've added a couple of things because, I think I mentioned in one of our earlier sessions that I've come before you, that the new Head Start Performance Standards came out. And so they've added a few items in those performance standards, and so we'll be addressing those things. Some of those deal with parent, parent education, and so we'll be, we'll be dealing with those kinds of things as we go through, through next year. We're also asked to provide a, just a, a brief summary of where we are with child assessment data. So you notice we've included a chart in there, and I'm going to talk a little bit about that when I update you a little bit later tonight. The, the, on page four of, of, of handout 6B, we go through the budget justification for each category. And so there, we've broken it down for you with a narrative about the budget and where At the end of section of the narrative, you'll see how the school system meets its 25% in-kind contribution requirement. So I'd be happy to address any kinds of questions that you might have regarding the Head Start application, and if not, or when you're ready, we would need your approval with a vote.
Thank you. Any question or comment from board members at this time?
Got a question. Dr. Ravi. You said about you have to address parent education?
In terms of how, the kind of training that we'll provide for our parents, now, we've done that in the past. You know, we, with, what we do is, we have monthly workshops for parents, where we invite not only our Head Start parents, but also all preschool parents. We'll do sessions on continuing education, whether it's at Adult Ed. We'll have Ms. Porsho come in, representatives from UNAS to come and talk about what's available, workforce investment-type things, child development topics, behavior, those kinds of things. We do that. We give our parents at, at orientation, we ask, we give them a survey and ask them what topics are they interested in. And then when we take the results of those surveys, then we try and provide training for them throughout the year. Now, what, what the new standard asks is that we also provide research-based parent education-type topics and strategies to get that across to them. So we're in the process of reviewing some curricula that we can incorporate into our, our routines and on what we can send home, provide training on those things. So that's what we're in the process now, and then we'll implement it next year.
Okay. Thank you. And I'll, I'll make a motion that we move this to the full board with a recommendation.
We have a motion by Mr. Warner, seconded by Dr. Kraft. Any further discussion? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes 10-0.
Before I go, I'd like to just thank you. Before I go, I'd like to just update you on a few items. If you look at some of the handout 6C, I've given you, given you a copy of our most recent data showing the progress of our Head Start students from the fall assessment conducted in September to our winter assessment conducted in, in January. And you'll notice the SETI progress made by our students in all seven of the components listed. So we still have a little work to do. Our, our goal is to have students at 80%. And so we've, we've, we've met those goals in some of the areas. We also break it down by race, by gender, to make sure that we're not, you know, that we're able to, to see how our students are progressing and address areas that we may need to address. We'll conduct our end-of-the-year assessment in, in late April and early May. And, and then what we'll do at the end of the year, we take those results, and we're looking at individual classrooms, individual teachers, we're looking at student progress, and then that, that information will follow those kids as they go on to kindergarten. You'll notice in, in handout 6D, what we've, what we've provided for you, I've given you a handout of the, the numbers and the types of, of areas that we refer our preschool students. You know, we talk about getting them off on the right track. And so we're really at an advantage having our universal preschool program because we're able to kind of identify some, some students that may need some extra assistance. You know, if we didn't have our universal preschool program, these things would be going on in kindergarten. And so we're able to get an early assessment of our kids, those kids that need some extra help. And this, this particular sheet here just talks about the numbers of kids that are referred to our management team, and then they'll, they'll work with them and then see if we need to do any further referrals. And you'll notice that of our 21 students needing further evaluation, 11 have been completed and an IP, and an IP developed for some of those students. So again, those will be things, it could be speech, it could be some of the other areas. But again, the earlier we identify those kids, the earlier they can get the help that's, that's needed. I also wanted to remind you that, you know, in our board newsletter every month, and again, this is one of those requirements from Head Start, you know, you're, you're presented with the monthly financial report that you get with that newsletter, the enrollment report. We've also included our physicals, dental, and immunization report that we've included in that. It's become the Head Start newsletter, I think. And then the lunch, the food services report that we give to you. And then the last handout, I know in our super news, we talked about our application process, the enrollment for, is beginning. And you have, what, what you have there is the press release that Ms. Schneider has, has sent out. And so she's given out, you'll notice that we'll start on Monday, March 27th. It's broken down. We stagger registration by the last name and the, the child's last name. Just a reminder to parents, it's not first come, first served. You know, we're going to serve everybody that, that registers. But we've tried to stagger it. It's worked very well over the last couple of years. And then you'll notice after the 12th, we'll start accepting applications on, on Wednesday, April 26th, May 10th, and May 17th. And then during the months of June and July, applications will be accepted on Tuesdays and Wednesdays of each week. We accept the applications at the Joseph Davies Preschool Office from 9:00 to 2:00. So that's some information. Of course, the, they can get the application on our website, they can download it from the website, they can get it here at the central office, and, or they can pick one up from, from Davies. So we're looking forward to another great year of preschool. And just lastly, I want to, as, as I always do, I want to thank Ms. Desatell and the entire management team and all the teachers and parent professionals that, that make our preschool, not just in Head Start, but in all our preschool programs, that, that, that give our kids that opportunity to get off on the right track.
Thank you. Anyone else? And I'll turn it back over to Ms. Dice for number seven.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Raviotta. We appreciate all the hard work that you and your whole team do.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay. Next item, personnel changes. Mr. Granberry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We have a few.
I just want you to note that in, in the transfers, these are the six teacher leaders that are being appointed at Merrill Elementary School. We had applications, and Ms. Albers, along with Ms. Harleton, did the interviews. These are the six educators who will be the leaders at each of those grade levels. Ms. Granberry also put out the application for assistant principal today, so we'll be choosing that shortly. We have met with every faculty affected who will lose teachers to Merrill, and those are Araby Elementary, Shemet Elementary, Lacoste, and Davies. And we have gotten their preference sheets as who would like to go or whatever comments they wanted to make to us. So now that these teacher leaders are established, we'll be doing the movement and assignment of teachers to, the existing teachers in those four schools that will have to move. We'll make those assignments within the next week or two in preparation for Transfer Day. Then we'll know what our openings, additional openings exist that we'll put out to the entire employee group. So we are moving. We're well on the way. Ms. Granberry's done a great job in getting all of this together and the massive pieces of paper and preferences of teachers and all that involves in establishing a new school. We're well on our way to that.
Thank you, Ms. Volche. Mr. Granberry, you have been quite busy.
Oh, yeah.
We will be.
I can almost see my desk. It's covered with papers, you know?
Okay. Looking at this group of teacher leaders, and it's, it's one at every level, correct, Ms. Volche?
Yes.
Right. It's actually, it's in order kindergarten, first, second, third, fourth, and fifth.
Okay. Thank you. And we have a few retirees. Ms. Lynette Roland, who's a school psychologist, want to wish her a happy retirement and thank her for her years of service. And then also, Ms. Thelma Amon and Lydia Crank. We appreciate all of your time with us, and happy retirement to you also. Okay, Mr. Long?
One quick question. The support staff for the new Merrill Elementary, how, how is that going to work? Is through the contract?
Once the teaching corps is done, then we'll move to the support staff. It's probably going to mean, I would think, you know, once we get through the advertisement process, some additional custodial spots, maybe cafeteria will be moving people, depending upon numbers, and of course, paraprofessionals as well. So all of that's going to be done once the teachers are in place, but we'll be moving on that shortly.
Okay, so they'll have to apply once it's posted?
Yes.
It's in-house first, correct?
Yes, sir. All in-house first.
Okay. Thank you.
Were there any other questions or comments on the personnel changes? Okay. Thank you again, Mr. Granberry. Good luck with continuing to staff our new school. Thank you. Okay, next item is insurance. Mr. Egan.
Mr. Clement?
Good evening.
Good evening. In your package, you have the tabulations of Mr. Clements, Mr. Richie Clements, Clements Insurance is here. This is this evening. He has gone out and surveyed the insurance markets and negotiated on the behalf for property insurance for the coming year, beginning in April 1st. And the results of those negotiations in your packets is two exhibits. One shows the results of his efforts on our behalf, and the second kind of shows a historical view of the past seven or six years, I guess, which shows how our insurance premiums have fared on different levels. Going to the first exhibit, we currently, the total insured value of all of our properties is over $438 million. So when Mr. Clements negotiated, this is the results. There are three companies, and we doing a layered structure, just like we have in the past, because it's difficult to find a company that's willing to take all the risk on all of our properties. So there are four companies that'll be participating. The first three are going to share the risk of the first $30 million of coverage on our properties. And the fourth company is going to take everything in excess of $30 million. And you can see that the premiums are in the column 200, 2017 premium for the four. The first three all have the same premium because they all sharing that risk. We have the surplus lines tax, which we are required to pay on all insurance policies to the state, and also a Louisiana citizens' tax, but we're eligible to apply to have that reimbursed by the state as well. And as you can see, taking it all into account, plus we have insurance on our boilers in our schools as well, which is the fifth line down standalone there. The total premiums, total premium this year is going to be $1,197,024. And as you see at the bottom, we have that, that represents a decrease from last year of $115,000, a little over $115,000, or 9.6%. If you go to the second exhibit, it shows year-to-year, starting in 2012, 2013, and you can see the different premiums as we go on. In 2012, 2013, it was rather high, $1.8 million. Last year, we paid $1,197,024. And comparing that to this year, it shows the decrease, the corresponding decrease. I'll be happy to answer any questions. Mr. Clements is here to answer any questions. But this is what we're proposing. It's an overall net decrease from last year, so the board is saving money. We are getting additional coverage on named storm insurance as well because last year, we were insured up to $28 million on named storms, and Mr. Clements was able to negotiate up to $30 million for this year. So we're getting more coverage for named storms for a lesser premium. And just to explain that a little bit, the reason we're covered for $30 million for named storms and not everything, we're required to cover the amount that FEMA paid for wind damage in the rebuilding of all our schools, which is approximately $20 million, a little over $20 million. We are well covered within that range that we're required to cover. Anything over that, as long as we meet that requirement, we'll be eligible for FEMA participation should another disaster happen. So the named storm coverage is rather expensive. So we are covering our obligation, and anything over that, presuming that we had an event that exceeded $30 million, would be eligible for FEMA coverage. So that's why we have the $30 million cap this year. But I haven't said that. Would be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions? Mr. Long?
I'm curious about Merrill Elementary. Is that included with these rates?
It is not. We will not include that until we take possession of the school. See, it's still in the possession of the contractors, so we don't really have an interest in it. Until we take possession, then it will be added. So there will be, I mean, Mr. Clements could speak to that.
Well, we will save those four months to, because if it's in June, we won't have to pay for now, April.
So these rates could go up in June?
It would go up because we're adding additional value, additional buildings. It won't be, the rates won't go up. We'll just be paying that rate for the additional properties that we're adding to the policy. So it'll go up some. Yes, sir.
Are we saving $115,000 possibly with the new school? It might go back up to about what we were paying?
It'll go up some, but I don't think it'll go up $115,000. It won't go up that much. So, but that So, but that won't be till next fiscal year. We won't take possession to the school until this summer, after June 30th, but that would be incorporated into next year's budget.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions from the board?
I got a question. That $30 million agreement that we have, is that like in perpetuity? Does that last forever, or does that ever go away?
Well, that's for this year. We are covered for a year. So next year, we would probably negotiate, and depending on the values next year or the costs next year, it might be in perpetuity if we can negotiate that. But this negotiation is just for the 2017, 2018 term.
We're required to keep the 22-ish million dollars that FEMA, right? That's what you meant. That'll last forever.
Okay, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Right. The differential, if we insure for more, that's our decision. But the requirement is whatever FEMA's participation on the wind damage was, and that was running last time we looked, about 22 million maybe?
Yes, ma'am. Yes. So we're well covered in our obligation to FEMA.
Thank you.
Yes, I'd just like to, again, it's always good news when we have decreased premiums, especially when we're comparing apples to apples. So of course, as we add a new building, that's an additional expense, but the fact that even as we compare to the previous year, apples to apples, to see 10% decrease is a great thing. And so at this time, I'd like to make a motion to send this to the full board as a recommendation.
We have a motion from Dr. Lewis.
I'll second it.
Second, excuse me, by Mrs. Dyssow. Any further comment? Please vote your machines.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mr. Clemens. Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. Thank you. Our next item was, would be a finance item in Ms. Lemoine's absence. Mr. England, would you please chair?
Sure, that's no problem.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dyssow. Item number nine, request for permission to advertise for bids for official journals. This is something that we do every year. I'm not naming that?
Yes, sir. The bullet is required to appoint an official journal every year for the purpose of publishing minutes of the board meetings and advertising that the school system will do. So we're asking for permission to advertise this, to solicit potential official journals to service for the next fiscal year.
We have a motion by Dr. Kraft, second by Mr. Long. Any questions for Mr. Fernandez on this item? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item number 10, request for permission to advertise for vehicle painting and repairs. Mr. Fernandez?
Sir. Okay, again, this is an annual bid that we normally, the board normally approves every year for painting and bus repairs to school buses that become injured and need repair. We asking for permission to advertise for bids for this, as we put it term July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018.
Okay. We have a motion by Mr. Wong, second by Mr. Gaines. Any questions for Mr. Fernandez? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Move on to item number 11, request for permission to advertise for bids for gasoline, diesels, and other fluids. Mr. Fernandez?
Thank you, Ms. England.
You're busy tonight, sir.
Well, you know. This is another annual bid that we traditionally do. It's for gasoline for our vehicles, as well as oil and other fluids that are used in the repair and operation of those vehicles. It's an annual bid going, lasting from July 1st, 2017 to June 30th, 2018. Asking for permission to advertise.
We have a motion by Dr. Lewis, second by Ms. Assevedo. Any questions for Mr. Fernandez on this item? Please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, move on to item number 12, request for permission to advertise for bids for new school buses. Mr. Fernandez?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Ms. England. This is a bid, we're requesting advertise for bids for new school buses. These will be the school buses purchased with the remainder of our FEMA vehicle replacement funds, and these new buses will go into our fleet to assist us with what we're expecting to be additional routes with the new school opening in the fall, as well as add to our fleet of buses.
Okay, so it's going to be eight school buses?
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then it's going to be air-conditioned?
The funds to purchase.
It's going to be air-conditioned?
Yes, sir. We put in specifications air-conditioned. That's a commitment that the board made for future bus purchases to have air-conditioned. So those will be included in the specifications.
Thank you, sir. Got a motion by Mr. Gaines, second by Mr. Long. And let me ask a question before we go on. We're going to be getting eight new ones, and are we going to advertise to get rid of other buses, or are we going to?
Well, we just disposed of some buses recently, so we're not necessarily going to advertise to dispose of buses. They'll just be in our fleet, and we'll have some spares in case they're needed. Maybe sometime in the future, we'll get rid of some of our older, much older buses, but right now, we're just going to supplement our fleet.
Right. We don't want to release any buses till we're absolutely sure of the routes and the numbers that we're going to need with the opening of the school, and how we're going to adjust. Then look at the number of spares that we need, then probably, once that's done after the beginning of the school year, take a look at if we have any excess buses in the fleet, then we'll auction them off.
And these new buses, they'll be mainly for special trips, you know, for field trips and that?
Well, they will go into the fleet for routes, regular routes, and as well as trips.
For trips, okay. All right. We have a motion and second, Ms. Dyssow?
Thank you, Mr. Fernandez. The disaster relief funds are going to pay for all these buses? None of the funds will be taken out of the dedication?
We're using up the remainder of, well, depending on what price the buses come in, we're going to use the remainder of our FEMA funds. If it goes over, it'll, some of it will come out of that app warm tax that is set by.
Right. Because if you remember, we've been very careful with those FEMA funds on that vehicle page, because we didn't have to buy 70 new buses all at one time. So we've been apportioning it out over the years, so this will be the final piece. That millage that you're talking about, which was three mills, was basically looked at a mill for buses, for asbestos removal, and instructional materials and supplies, was kind of how it went. But they were not dedicated 1-1-1. It was dedicated for all three of those initiatives, and we had language in there, any remaining for other operations of the school system. So even if we don't use that millage for a bus, we can use it for instructional materials and supplies.
Great.
So it's used up every year, but it, the primary focus are those three areas.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. That's it, Ms. Dyssow?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fernandez? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, we move on to item number 13, request for permission to advertise for paper cleaning and custodial supplies. Ms. Bloom?
Good evening.
And Mr. Fernandez, thank you for your help.
Good evening. We're asking permission to advertise for paper cleaning and custodial supplies. This is an annual bid.
Okay. Got a motion by Mr. Long, second by Dr. Lewis. Any questions from board members on this item? And if you have any questions, you know, at the federal regular board meeting, it'll come up again as far as that goes. I want a bid to come in.
Right.
That's right, so, okay, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay, item number 14, request for permission to advertise for bids for spices and seasoning, class two, cereals, dry beans, and crackers, class three, frozen foods, class five, meats and meat products, class six, poultry and eggs, class seven, seafood products, class eight, and canned goods, class nine, for the period of July 1, 2016 through December 31st, 2016.
It should be 17.
Should be 17, right. This is a typo.
The papers that you received.
There's a typo. It's a typo on here. So excuse that.
You should, right. You should have the bid advertisement in the request form, the bid advert. This is a six-month bid for our regular food purchases that we do every six months, our school system.
Okay. We have a motion by Dr. Kraft, second by Mr. Campbell. And with that correction also, you know, for 2017. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. All right. Any other questions? If not, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Okay. Item number 15, request for permission to advertise for bids for milk and milk products. Mr. Campbell?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dyssow. Any questions on this item? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Item number 16, request permission to advertise for bids for bread and bread products. Motion by Mr. Wong, second by Mr. Gaines. Any questions for Ms. Bloom? Being none, please cast your vote.
Motion passes ten zero.
Thank you, Ms. Bloom.
Thank you.
Item number 17, Ms. Votchay?
Actually, with the super news, everything had shouted down. We went over with that, so that's a good thing. At the regular meeting, we are trying to see if our Shamaht basketball team is available to come for the meeting in two weeks, so we're reaching out to them, and possibly the academic games team. So we may have many of our students here with us at the regular meeting.
Great. Thank you, Ms. Votchay. Is there a motion to adjourn at this time? Motion by Ms. Assevedo, second by Mr. Campbell. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you, and good night.